Good evening, Mayor Redman, Council members and community members. My name is Tammy Ayers. I am the business agent for Teamsters Local 763. I represent your city, Snohomish City workers in Public Works, Parks and Office Technical. I am also a proud citizen of Snohomish and I take great pride in representing these hardworking employees. Of all the jurisdictions, I represent the workers here in Snohomish standout. My shop stewards, who volunteer their time, dedicate more hours advocating for their coworkers than all of my other locations combined. That speaks volumes about the pride and commitment they have for their jobs in this community. I am here today because something troubling is happening, something I don't see in other cities. The divide between Snohomish administration and its workforce is growing deeper. From the very beginning of this negotiation, my members asked me to keep them informed, and I have done that. But early in bargaining, when the city proposed withdrawing from the Teamsters pension, we were stunned, not only by the proposal but by the words that they used to justify it. A city representative said, and I quote, "We will be cutthroat. In one way or another, the pension will be gone. That is not honest bargaining. That is leveraging power against your workforce." That statement shook the room. One of my stewards had to leave emotionally overwhelmed by how callous it was. These workers have honored their side of the agreement, diverting their own wages into their pension. And while the taxpayers contribute as well, the workers put in five times more of their own money. That is money that workers could have brought home to their families, paid their mortgages and put food on the table. They were responsible for saving that money in their own retirement, and now the city wants to steal that from them. The city is using a technical loophole which breaks its promise because many of the members are not yet vested. This move would cost veteran employees up to 10 years of service credit. These are people who won't have time to rebuild another pension before they retire. And for what? A replacement plan that costs the taxpayers more and provides less to workers. The city claimed one reason for withdrawing from the pension was that employees didn't understand wage diversion. But if that were truly the concern, you'd expect the city to educate, communicate and promote the benefit, not eliminate it. Yet, within just weeks, the last few weeks, job postings were made and posted on the city of Snohomish's own website, and there was no mention of the Teamsters pension as a benefit. This completely contradicts the city's stated reasoning. You can't claim workers don't understand a benefit while actively choosing not to disclose or explain it to new hires. This isn't just a financial decision, it's a very personal one. It sends a clear message to the workers that their years of service, loyalty and hard work are not valued. And that breaks more than just a promise, it breaks trust. Trust that, trust between the workers and the city and trust between the citizens in this city. And I'll just end with this. My father was a union member of his entire life. He lives on his pension today. Thank you for your time.
All right, would anyone else like to provide comment? Go ahead and state your name, relationship to the city.
Good evening, council members. My name is James Pullen. I've been with the city of Snohomish since 2018. Before joining the city, I owned and sold a successful business. I chose to leave the private sector and become a public servant, not because it paid more, but because I believed in the mission of serving the community. This community. The benefits in retirement were an important part of that decision. They represented stability and long-term security for my family. I bring over 20 years of experience in my field, and every day I take pride in maintaining the infrastructure and essential services that our citizens depend on. Now, this administration is proposing to eliminate the pension. The pension was established with your support. Our current contract was negotiated under the guidance of this council and this administration. Abandoning that agreement would take away something that workers like me have been counting on and investing in for years. What I want to point out is the majority of this pension is funded by employees, not the city. Workers contribute $1.25 per hour, every hour we work, while the city contributes just 25 cents. So my question is, what is the real benefit of removing a pension that costs the taxpayers so little, yet provides so much security and loyalty from the people who serve them? For such a small investment, the city receives experienced, dedicated employees that take pride in their work and in serving this community. Taking away the pension would not only hurt employees, it risks losing stability, commitment and institutional knowledge that benefits the citizens every day. I am proud to serve this city, and I ask that you honor the commitment made to its Public Works employees. Please do not take away the pension that we've worked so hard to build and that the city promised to support. Thank you.
Thank you. If someone would like to provide comment, go ahead and state your name and relationship to the city. You'll have three minutes.
My name is Tom Kreiber, and I serve as volunteer shop steward for the office technical group of our local Teamsters 763 union here at the city of Snohomish. I've had the opportunity to sit at the bargaining table during our current contract negotiations, and I feel a responsibility to speak up about a proposal that would negatively affect not only our workforce but the long-term well-being of our community. The city is currently proposing to eliminate our Teamsters pension, a benefit that was previously agreed to by both parties. Right now, the employer contributes 25 cents per hour per union member, and we contribute 1.25 per hour from our own pay. This pension isn't just a financial detail, it's how many of us have responsibly planned for our retirement and our families' futures. Personally, I have a child. Like many of my coworkers, I've committed to public service and invested in this pension so that one day, my family can have some stability. Take this away now, and undo year, taking this away now would undo years of planning and sacrifice, not just for me, but for many others who caught on this benefit to retire with dignity. The employer's proposed replacement and deferred contribution plan actually costs the taxpayers more money and delivers less value to employees. It does not include guaranteed lifetime benefits, spousal protections or other critical features of the Teamsters pension. There is real data to show the consequences of this kind of change. According to a study by the Rand Corporation, switching from a defined benefit like the Teamsters pension to a deferred contribution plan has been modeled to reduce employee retention by several percentage points in shortened careers. In other words, if we weaken pension benefits, we lose people. People with experience, knowledge and commitment to this community that hurts the workforce, the city's efficiency and ultimately the residents we serve. I also heard a member of the employer's management team at the bargaining table express that they don't expect or even want employees to stay longer than a few years. That's disheartening, but it's something we can and should change. Data shows that if you can get public employees past the five-year mark, when they vest in their pensions, they're far more likely to stay for the long term. At our last bargaining session, the employer's attorney said he could pull this proposal off the table, but only if leadership directs him to do so. So I'm asking you directly, please give that direction. Tell the employer to keep the Teamsters pension, and while you're at it, support a living wage increase in the next contract that matches today's economy. Thank you for your time.
Would anyone else like to provide comment? Go ahead and state your name and relationship to the city.
Good evening, city council and residents. My name is Liz Brown. I'm an Edmonds resident, but I'm here tonight to read a statement on behalf of a city employee who felt too afraid to speak publicly due to fear of retaliation. When I think about what kind of retirement plan I'd want for myself and my family, I know there are a lot of choices out there. But a pension, a real pension, like the Teamsters pension, is something that stands out. It is the healthiest pension plan in the country. It's one of the major reasons many of us chose public service in the first place. A pension offers stability and a safety net, and once you're vested, it provides a guaranteed benefit for life. It also offers death benefits for your family in case the worst happens. Pensions aren't something you can just restart or replace easily. They take time, years to build, and once that time is gone, you don't get it back. That's why it's so important for us as city employees to keep the Teamsters pension we have. For those of us who aren't yet vested, losing this pension would mean losing everything we've worked toward. That time and money, gone. For those who are vested, it means stopping the progress we've made and being forced into something completely different with no guaranteed future. What makes this even worse is that city workers have paid five times more into our pensions than the taxpayers have. That's right. We're contributing the majority of the money, and if the city pulls out now, we lose all of it. And taxpayers lose their contribution too. Nobody wins. Even more outrageous is the fact that the city's proposed replacement will actually cost taxpayers more than what's already in place and offer employees less. Why take some away something that's working only to replace it with something more expensive and less secure? Choices like that are not fiscally responsible for anyone. If the city wants to invest more money into something, invest it into our wages, so we can afford to live in the communities we serve, so we can keep our families housed, healthy and stable. This isn't just about numbers. This is about people, about promises, about protecting the time, money and trust we've put into a future we believed was secure. Please don't let that be taken away. Don't let our time, our money and our pensions be stolen. Stand with us, keep the pension. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Debbie Lippincott. I'm a resident of Snohomish and a retired union representative. I can afford to live in Snohomish because I have a union pension. And when workers look at unions and choose what union they want to belong to, they look at the kinds of things like benefits. Teamsters has a strong pension program. As a sister said, it's one of the strongest in the nation. It's a defined benefit, and those are like dinosaurs these days. And for the city to take the position that they're taking at the bargaining table with the attitude that I understand the city representative is taking is not the Snohomish that I love. And so I'm asking you to reconsider this. The Teamsters pension is extremely important to your workforce, and in order to continue to serve the city proudly like they do, they need the city to stand with them. Thank you.
Would someone else like to provide comment? Go ahead, state your name and relationship to the city. You'll have three minutes.
My name is Max Sardik, and I am reading this statement on behalf of Joe Palmer, who could not be here tonight. Good evening. My name is Joe Palmer, and for those who do not know me, I run the water department for the city. I've been the lead of the department for the last 18 years and have worked for the city for almost 20 years. I've lived in Snohomish nearly my whole life, and I'm a proud graduate of Snohomish High School. I take great pride in serving this community and supporting our citizens. I work very hard every single day to make sure that each resident has access to fresh, clean drinking water. That sometimes means working through the night, through snowstorms, freezing temperatures, whatever it takes to keep water, the water flowing. In Public Works, we take our responsibility seriously. We're proud to provide excellent customer service and essential infrastructure, often without recognition, because we care. But now, this council, our representatives, are talking about taking away our Teamsters pension. Let me be clear. We are fully committed to this city and its residents. We give our time, our energy, and often our personal lives to this work. But now, you're telling us that the city is no longer committed to our families. The Teamsters pension isn't just a benefit, it's a promise. It provides for my family after I'm gone. It ensures stability for my wife and even helps protect my children. If I pass away while vested, my kids will receive $2,000 per month until they turn 22. That's not just a retirement plan, that's a family plan. The alternative being offered, a DCP plan or a deferred compensation plan, is like a savings account. Once the money runs out, it's gone. The city has claimed this change is necessary due to administrative concerns, but that doesn't hold up. The Teamsters pension is one of the healthiest and most stable pension funds in the country. There's no financial or operational reason to abandon it. What's more troubling is that the proposed replacement plan would actually cost the taxpayers more while reducing benefits for employees. That is not logical, and it certainly isn't fair. It means higher costs for the public and less security for the people doing the work? How does that make sense? That's not compare, that's not a comparable replacement, and it does not provide the same security. This can't be about money. It simply doesn't add up, so I must ask why. Do the citizens of this town really want to take away the future security of families like mine? I'm a proud, I'm proud to be a member of the Teamsters Local 763. I'm proud to live in a city that has long supported unions, fair wages and working families, or at least it used to. If it weren't for unions protecting working people, we'd still be talking about breadlines and soup kitchens. I'd just like to say one final thing. Stand with your workers, stand with your community, keep the pension. Thank you very much.
Is there another commenter? Go ahead and step up and state your name and relationship to the city. You'll have three minutes.
My name is Karen Allen. I'm the lab tech at the wastewater treatment plant, and I've worked for the city for 24 years. Part of the reason I wanted to work for the city was for the pension. So when the opportunity came for a pension with Teamsters, I voted yes, and I would vote yes again today. And I strongly oppose any attempt by the city to dissolve the Teamsters pension program. I've contributed faithfully, planning my future around this benefit, and the idea of it being dissolved feels like betrayal. The pension was agreed upon by both the city and the workers. We negotiated it in good faith, we voted on it, and we need to uphold that agreement. Backing out isn't just wrong, it's unethical. We held up our end, and we expect the city to do the same. What's even more concerning is that this pension is partially funded with taxpayer dollars. Dissolving it now would not only break a promise to workers, but also disrespect the trust of taxpayers, who expect public funds to be used responsibly and ethically. We have all worked long hours doing essential work that keep the city running, and that work was done with the understanding that our pension would be there when we needed it most. The city should respect its commitment, and the pension should not be up for negotiation or sacrifice. The city wants to replace the Teamsters pension with the deferred compensation program, and DCP is already available to us. We already contribute to DCP, and it's great, I do it, but DCP, I don't want DCP at the expense of a pension. I want a guaranteed income that only a pension can provide. Personally, I have planned for these pension funds to pay for healthcare for me and my husband in retirement, and so dissolving it now will set us back years and tens of thousands of dollars will be lost. We need just two more years to become fully vested in the Teamsters program. Just two more years so that all that money and taxpayer money too isn't forfeit. Dissolving it now by the city would feel like a gut punch and feel like a slap in the face. I'm asking you, please not to do this to us. If it's taken away, how can we expect to trust the city again? Heather recently sent out an email where she voiced her concern about the culture here at the city, and she said she strives for a culture where people feel heard and aren't afraid to speak up, where we are empowered to hold one another accountable to our commitments. The pension is a commitment that should be honored. If the city eliminates our pension, the culture here at the city will be broken and morale will be at an all-time low. So if the leadership really cares about the culture here at the city, you will listen to our pleas and not take the Teamsters pension away that all of us here want and all of us here are relying on. Thank you.
Go ahead and step up, make sure the microphone is on, and then state your name and relationship to the city. You'll have three minutes. It's not on. It's, it's not on.
Oh, very good. Hello? There we go. Thank you. My name is Rich Carson. I run the fleet department for the city of Snohomish. I also handle most of the equipment training for our crews and keep my phone on 24/7 in case I can assist during emergencies. I'm reaching out today to speak about some issues that are deeply important to me. I've been following the discussions and emails about the city's effort to move employees away from the Teamsters retirement plan. I'm frustrated, and I know I'm not alone. Many in Public Works Group feel the same way. Right now, employees contribute $1.25 per hour into the pension, and the city contributes 25 cents per hour. This is money that's being invested in our future. For employees with longevity, especially those who joined earlier, the plan offers a two-for-one credit. For every year they work, they get a credit for two years toward their pension. That's a powerful incentive and benefit that people like me who joined later in our careers won't get. The Teamsters pension gives us something the proposed city's DCP, DCP plan doesn't, a guaranteed monthly income stream for life. That's security, that's peace of mind. In contrast, the DCP pays out only till the money runs out. That could mean running out of income when we're too old or physically unable to work again. That's not a risk I and many others can afford to take. And let's be honest, this isn't just a financial issue, it's about fairness. We entered into this agreement in good faith, we've done our part. The council should not allow this benefit to be taken away now, especially after years of dedication. I strongly urge the council to step in and protect the workers' pension. For many of us, this is the only chance we have to retire with dignity. I've heard the claim that some new employees don't like having the extra retirement deduction, but honestly, I haven't heard that directly from anyone. If that concern does come up, I believe the correct response from the city would be to explain that the Teamsters retirement is portable. It can follow you to another employer with a similar plan, just like PERS. From where I stand, switching plans doesn't make any logical sense. Another concern I'd like to raise is about the new city campus. There's been a lot of different stories floating around about what the campus will include and how it will work. But here's what's clear to me: the new site will not be able to house all of our vehicles and equipment. My best estimate is that 30 to 40% of what we have, if that. It's clear that the new city campus will not be able to house all of Public Works. We still need an additional facility to store and maintain our vehicles and equipment. The pit site was reviewed but would be extremely costly to develop, and in the event of a major disaster, it could be difficult or even impossible to access in time to respond to emergencies. There has also been some discussion about the 1801 site and its location in a floodplain. While the portable on the site does need to be removed due to the expiration of its permitted use, the rest of the site continues to function well for now. If flooding is a primary concern, it raises questions about proposals to convert the area into a park or a public market. What about the Bonneville site for 5.5 million for Public Works? Taking the time to hear my concerns, I appreciate it.
Go ahead and state your name and relationship to the city.
Madam Mayor, distinguished council, Devon Acton Public Works, Street Division. I've worked for the city and I've been a member of Local 763 Teamsters for 21 years. My wife and I come from families that have decades of proud union membership. The reason I'm addressing you tonight is the proposed removal of the Teamsters pension, dental and vision plans. These plans are the cornerstone of our benefit package and should never be considered an entitlement that can simply be discarded as a quick cost-saving method for the city. We recommend, excuse me, we are surrounded by municipalities, counties and agencies that have these Teamster plans, and they are essential benefits for their employees and those entities. I'm getting closer to retirement age, and I have been paying into the Teamsters pension plan for multiple years. It's become a part of my financial planning for retirement. If it is removed, it'll be harmful to my wife and myself and a broken promise the city made with its employees. All members of Public Works are dedicated public servants, stewards of the taxpayer dollar and providers of 24-hour-a-day, 365-day-a-year service to the citizens of this city. This is a good thing to have our members and their families here tonight discussing organized labor issues with legal protections set into law guarding us from retaliation in any form. It's been over 15 years since there's been a gathering like this at a city council meeting. There was anti-union bias then, and there is anti-union bias now. We can do better than this. In closing, I strongly recommend that Mayor Redman and the city council change course on these issues and move forward in a positive manner. Thank you for giving me this time to speak, and God bless.
All right, go ahead and step up to the podium. State your name and relationship to the city, and you'll have three minutes.
I'm Bonnie Headley. I'm a resident over here on Rainier Street. I gotta say, this has given me goosebumps. This is really what America is about. It's wonderful. I came here, of course, to talk about trees, to tell you all how beautiful the maples are this week. If you haven't noticed, they are fabulous. I also have been out of town and traveled in, among other places, Latvia, where the citizens lived under occupation for 30 or 40 years and are now free. And the vibrance of the community was thrilling. The beautiful parks, the incredible plantings, the culture, the art, it all survived those dim, dark days of Russian oppression. And I am so grateful that here in Snohomish, we have dedicated city workers like you and dedicated public servants like you. I have watched this council in action for more weeks than I can count, and I'm just so pleased and proud of all of you. I just think you're, this is what America is, and that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Do we have other, any other in-person attendees who'd like to speak? All right, go ahead and state your name and relationship to the city. You'll have three minutes.
Tim Lewis, citizen of the city. First of all, we own one of the big maple trees we've been growing leaves the entire year. It's now time for all of you to come by and pick your share up. Over in Avenue C, help yourself. No. First of all, I don't remember the gentleman's name that runs the equipment yard. One of the subjects I wanted to talk about tonight was exactly what he just said. It doesn't take a genius to figure out that there's not enough room in the new campus to house all that equipment, and there are plenty of places in the city, around the city to relocate the equipment yard. So I really support finding one of the local places like on Bonneville or at Northland D to move the equipment yard to, to do that. Secondly, I would like to thank Nathan Alanis, the chief. Last weekend, there was a conflict potential with a group of people exercising their political rights to sign a petition that just got out of control. And Nathan came to the group, issued a public statement that calmed everybody down. So I want to thank Nathan for doing that. And also, on the union sub, I wasn't prepared to speak about this. I've spent my entire career working around union workers, and I have not been a fan of unions, but I've seen what happens to people when they lose their, their benefits, and I see these folk that are fighting for their, for their benefits. You know, we in the technology business, we, we make so much money, we, that we haven't had to have pensions, and many of us now are regretting the decisions we didn't make to organize. Because now you look around at American businesses, we're squeezing workers so hard. So I really support everything that the union folks have said in the hallway. Please support them. But come pick your, pick your leaves up too, by the way.
All right, go ahead and make sure the microphone is on, and then state your name and relationship to the city. You all have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Mary Keefe. I'm a business agent with Teamsters Local 763, and I'm reading this statement on behalf of a city worker who did not feel comfortable reading it due to fear of retaliation. To the Snohomish City Council, I am submitting this letter anonymously to be read aloud by a citizen out of fear of retaliation. I've worked for the city of Snohomish for several years, and like many of my coworkers, I've dedicated my time, skills and heart to serving this community. The residents of Snohomish deserve excellent service for the taxes they pay, and every day we work hard to deliver just that. Over the years, I've watched the workplace culture shift, and not for the better. Particularly in the last four years, there has been a noticeable decline in morale. The administration has grown, grown increasingly top-heavy with raises, bonuses and new job titles primarily benefiting upper management, while the workers in field and offices, those who keep the city running are often overlooked and undervalued. I've never worked in an environment that felt so biased, disconnected and unsupportive of its workforce. I was always taught that leadership is only as strong as the people behind it. Right now, it feels like the Right now, it feels like the leadership is focused only on supporting itself. The shift has hurt the city's reputation. We're seeing high employee turnover, and longstanding institutional knowledge is being lost. New hires are leaving almost as quickly as they came in, especially in departments like Public Works and Finance. The Finance Department in particular has seen constant turnover in the last few years. Grievances with payroll, lost trust, and the departure of experienced staff have only made things worse. Nearly the entire department has turned over in just two years and half years, and two and a half years, under the current finance director. And now we are facing a potential loss of our Teamsters pension. This pension isn't just a benefit on paper, it's a promise. It represents years of dedication. For those of us close to the five-year vesting mark or close to retirement, losing this benefit now would mean losing everything we've worked towards. It's disheartening to hear that the city is making it harder for new hires to stay longer, long enough to vest, and is now looking to remove the Teamsters pension altogether. We work hard for this community. We've contributed to this pension, and we've earned it, and we deserve to keep it. I urge the council to stand with the employees who stand for Snohomish every single day. Keep the Teamsters pension in our contract. This is our livelihood, our future, our security. Thank you for listening. Sincerely, a faithful city employee and public servant.
Do we have any other in-person attendees who'd like to comment? Go ahead and step up. State your name and relationship to the city. You'll have three minutes.
Yeah, Christine Wakefield Nichols, and long-term resident, almost thirty years here in town, and I think I try to serve the city as best I can in ways that I'm able. I'm here to ask you, it seems a while back, the city decided to kind of roll back the civic campus project, given national trends and directions and lack of funding, et cetera, and not, and, how should I say, disruption. We don't really know what's happening. Every day, things change. I'm here to ask you tonight to not move forward on any spending efforts, primarily hiring someone to try to sell city properties and paying for more design work to the architect. It seems that we really don't have a sense yet of what we really need, and we've already spent, I think, a considerable amount of money with a bigger design that's been rolled back. And so my primary purpose is to ask you to put these things, if you want to discuss them, great, but not take any action on things that were, that are involved with spending more money, especially when we're in the middle of an election season. I know it's, has been sort of topsy-turvy for everyone, but it's not just at our local level, it's also at the national level, and that feeds back on how everybody feels here and how things are happening. I had no idea that things were so concerning with our public service employees, and that's distressing to me also. So, and by the way, my mother is a long-term Teamster forever, and she worked in a Teamster building where many of the employees were not Teamsters, but they got the benefits of the Teamsters because it was a union shop. So even though only certain people paid in, others benefited by getting a higher wage. Didn't want to go, but my primary reason to be here is to ask you to not spend any money or make decisions about spending money until we know the results of the election. I think it would be a poke in the eye to people just in the city who have been concerned about the way things are going, and everyone, we would like to be more transparent. So I hope that makes sense.
All right, would anyone else like to provide comment tonight? In person? Okay, we'll go ahead and go to, okay, come on up. Go ahead and make sure the microphone is on. State your name and relationship to the city. You'll have three minutes.
My name's John Cartek, seven one four, Fourth Street. And everyone on that side of this table here knows that I was mayor a few years ago. Look at all these workers behind here. I can see them, because I live in Snohomish. I see them driving by. The spark in their eyes and the smile on their faces are not there. Mayor Redman? City Administrator Thomas, you have failed. You're failing. We've lost fifty-five employees in the last three and a half years. There were only forty-six employees that worked for me when I was mayor. When I left City Hall, eleven fifty-nine PM, December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-one. They're afraid of retribution. They will not talk to you because they fear you. You are a failure. You failed, and this just breaks my heart. I love these men and women. I'm afraid for them. And city council, how can you just sit by for these last three and a half years and say nothing? You see there's fifty-five employees that have left? What's going on with you? Forty-four thousand dollars for a city logo, and it's ugly. How come the community didn't know about this? We weren't asked about it. Thank you.
All right, would anyone else like to provide public comment? Okay, we'll go to our remote attendees, and I do see a hand raised. There's a reminder to anybody else that is attending remotely to go ahead and raise your hand now. The system will call you to unmute yourself. Please do so at that time. Zero eight seven nine.
Good evening. Morgan Davis, Snohomish. I didn't realize this issue of pensions. The way I understood it, every city employee had a PERS pension funded by, you know, the state of Washington, PERS, Public Employees Retirement System, which is separate from the Teamsters pension, and then, of course, you have Social Security. So those are three defined benefit pensions that are in place right now. I'm always a fan of defined pension because I remember when the Boeing machine struck last year over, the company took away their defined benefit pension, gave them a 401K, and then young people struggling, just can't afford the contribution. So, but nevertheless, the company prevailed, and they ended up with a 401K. And I guess that's what the city's offering tonight, a deferred compensation plan, similar to a 401K. But anyway, I wasn't going to speak on that, but I want to applaud what Christine Nichols Wakefield just spoke. Agenda item four G should not be, should be table till after the election. Why are you committing to exclusive listing with Windermere for all these city assets for sale? That should not happen right now. It's a cart before the horse. And even then, why don't you take the model of the county on their public works yard on Bonneville? They had their own employee in Public Works, Randy Blair. He was a project manager, project coordinator. He handled the minimum bid auction on that surplus property. There's no need to give Windermere five percent commission. What, to market analysis? You had one in twenty-twenty-three. Just add another ten percent for inflation. No, this, this, a city employee, a project manager, somebody maybe like Brennan Collins, he should be able to handle surplus city property. But this should happen after the election. So please table, Council President Merrill, please move consent item, you're trying to sneak this through tonight, consent item four G, table until the next meeting, please. There's no need to, there's no imminent need to sign an exclusive agreement giving five percent. That means five percent on a ten million dollars, all these properties, if they value ten million, that's five hundred thousand dollars. That's three years of a project manager in the city. No, you need to go back to drawing board and postpone this until after the next meeting. Please, thank you. Goodbye.
All right, do we have any other remote attendees who would like to provide public comment at this time?